Good evening, Cambie. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for December 4th, 2024. We've got Councilor Patton and our attorney from Berry, Elton, Hammond, Emily Gaimont on Zoom tonight. Good evening. And Councilor Maldonado is going to be absent this evening. So please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Jeffy Father, thank you so much for this wonderful community that we live in. Thank you for his leaders. Thank you for the citizen leadership that makes our community so great. Ask for your blessings this holiday season as there are many in our community that are in need. Please, please provide the provisions that they will need to just have a safe and happy holiday season. I ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
One of these days, y'all will remember. There's not a comment there?
There's no comment there? Okay. Eileen, new employee introductions. Do we have any this evening?
We do not.
No new employees tonight. Perfect. Next up is citizen input and community announcements. So this is an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. If you are attending in person, please complete one of these yellow cards, which are on the back podium there. Please fill those out and hand it to our city recorder. She'll make sure that I get those and give you your time to speak. You are given three minutes to address the council. If we can solve the problem here this evening, we will. If not, I will connect with our city administrator and we will figure out where we need to go with said item. If you are not able to be in person but want to make a comment or ask questions virtually, please reach out to the WC recorder by 4:30 PM on meeting nights, which are the first and third Wednesdays of each month with your name and the topic that you'd like to speak about. Right now, first card that I have while we're waiting on a couple others is Alan J. Vehicles parked opposite side. And oh, noise ordinance pieces. Is that for you, sir? If you want to come up here to the table and address us on that, that'd be great. Yeah, you can sit here at the table and...
Mike hot?
The mic is hot.
First time ever. Just have a meeting. So I'm glad I have the clock right in front of me. I have three issues listed there. They're all pretty self-explanatory and minor. But the first one is vehicles on back roads or not busy roads parked in the opposite direction. It's more of an annoyance, but it's also personally to me, it's a danger. On busier roads, when cars are, if cars are parked the wrong way, I immediately want to slam on the brakes. Oh, my gosh, am I on a one-way street or the wrong way? Why that's allowed, I don't know. Could be a good way for the city to make money with tickets, but I'll leave that one alone. The other issue is noise ordinance. And is there a noise ordinance in place for particularly automobiles? A lot of times, I imagine, probably most of the town heard one about a week ago. That was, it was loud. And some of them get really loud. I know from reading, other states have implemented sound detectors and they'll actually flash a picture if it goes over decibels. But I imagine that's quite a costly. But more of, these are more questions. And then the last one is, I live right across from Zora Lutheran, which used to, until recently, had warming and cooling facilities for extreme weather. And as you mentioned, for, there's a lot of people in need. I moved over from Portland three years ago. So we know it's tougher in some areas than others, but I just wondered, is there an opportunity to, or are there warming facilities or an opportunity to utilize many of the vacant buildings such as Rite Aid? I know there's probably a whole lot to consider with that, legalities and financial and stuff. But buildings just sit there and you just wonder, not all homeless people are drug users. And we know that. But anyway, that it's even tonight, I wouldn't want to be out for more than a couple hours. And I'm from Connecticut. So I mean, originally. So I'm familiar with cold weather, but it's brutal. So that's, that's all I wanted to bring up.
No, I appreciate it. I can address actually all three of these right now for you. So vehicles parked on the opposite side. Chief Tro, I believe that is a parking violation. And if it is seen by an officer, they will write a ticket on those. I would say probably complaint driven. Is that correct, Chief Tro? Yeah. So if you see that, then I would say definitely, you know, call the non-emergency and they will have somebody take a look at it. I know I did not grow up here in Cambie, but in high school, I did receive a parking ticket because I was parked the wrong way. So I do know that that does occur. So please reach out and that can be looked at and ticketed as need be. Vehicle noise ordinance, I think we just have a general city noise ordinance. And so, and that usually, I believe, is 10 o'clock is our cutoff for certain things here in the city. I do know the vehicle that you were talking about, they seem to be making a run all over Cambie that particular night. And so I don't know if we have anything specific to vehicle. But, you know, I hopefully, I haven't heard it since. I don't know if you have either since the other night. Was it last week, I think it was going on?
Say again?
The vehicle that was, sounded like maybe they...
This one I heard during the day and it was, you know...
Oh, see, I had heard one over.
Nervous. It jolted me. It was a little bit...
And then, yes, we did have, Zora Lutheran used to be an overnight warming shelter. The congregation, a couple years ago, decided to discontinue doing that. And so right now, we just offer here in the city, like the library is open during operating hours for people to come and be in the library to warm up. And then the other, other option is Denny's. The manager and the franchisees for that have been very courteous and helpful with that to allow people to, that need it, to come there and sit and have a cup of coffee and a hot chocolate as long as they want to.
Is it overnight?
Pardon me?
Overnight, potentially.
Yeah, even if it's overnight. Right now, beyond that, I don't know if, there's some grumblings of conversation with some other organizations to try to do something, but I haven't heard much more than that. So I do know that there are some organizations trying to come together to work on, trying to figure that out because we know, we know that we need that here in our community. So...
Thank God it's not as heavy a problem as some other areas.
Yeah, well, we definitely don't get as cold as Connecticut, for sure. You know, so at least not yet this winter. So we'll see. But thank you, Alan. Appreciate you coming and asking about it.
Thank you all for considering.
Yeah. Next, Mr. Dr. Perman. Mr. Doctor. Doctor, doctor. Don is fine. Hi, Don. How are you?
Thank you for your little time tonight. As we know, discussed lack of a public parking lot on the south side of town for the last decade. I've been in Cambie 32 years. I am the developer of Redwood Village that has built a road that connects the logging road with the downtown city area on the south side. We continue as property owners to have people parked in our private parking lots because they want to get to the logging road. And they want to get to the logging road by car. Yes, there's access with bikes and pathways to walk. But there is no access to the logging road by car on the south side of town, except for a couple lots in the latest development at the end of town on 15th. Most people, the thousands of people that live on the south side of town, drive on Third Court to get to the logging road. The elderly women with dogs, the moms with cradles and kids that are taken on the logging road, they park right near the road. The logging road is the biggest and most popular park on the south side of town. And they use Third Court to get there. Yeah, my patients and the patients of the services there also use the road. And the third sector that uses the road are all the sectors of service of the city. Fire trucks, ambulance, utility trucks, maintenance truck. There was a maintenance truck on Monday I saw they were using it. So for 15 years, the city bus was having lunch there for an hour. So it's not like it's not been a public road from the beginning when it was built. It has served the community for 17 years. I had a Geo-Pacific study that works with Cambie Excavation, who said and analyzed it. And I sent it to the board and to the city. If you average the rock depths and asphalt, that's equal to the public standard of this town. Except this road doesn't receive $50,000 to $80,000 pound semi trucks. It's not an outlet for semi trucks. The heaviest truck that uses it is a garbage truck that's 15,000 pounds once a week. But it's built for 50,000 pounds. That's why there's no potholes. That's why the Geo-Pacific said it's an adequate road as is, and it will be for the next five to 10 years. You might add another layer of asphalt on it and give it another 20 or 30 years. That's my point. There is no public parking on the south side of town like they have in the north off of territory. That's why all our personal parking lots are being used. And it's been going on for years. And I'm trying to give it common sense. Use Third Court as the public road. It's been a public road for the last 17 years. And it's adequate. It's in fair condition. It's done its job. There's no potholes. It has served this community well for safe access. Yeah, we've paid for the lights, too. I've paid for the lights for 17 years to keep the road safe and lit, especially this time of year. I left my office, took a couple of cards, and that's a cul-de-sac. They still use it because the lights are lit. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to present a way, you told me there was not going to be any work session. Said, fine, then I had to come and talk to you. So I hope we can arrange a work session and go through all the technical details that you seem to need to move forward on a project that's going to bring something that's going to benefit this town and keep people out of private parking lots. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Perman. I will bring this up with the city manager here and we'll take a look at it again, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Meeks, Rob Meeks, pardon me. Parking on, is that Redwood?
Yeah, over there where Dr. Perman was talking.
Oh, okay.
So I'm Rob Meeks. I'm here as a representative from Anderson Properties. And up until three hours ago, I didn't know I was coming to this meeting until my wife told me I was on a forklift. Anyway, so Dr. Perman contacted a tenant at our property. We're a neighboring property of his. They contacted my wife, who contacted me and said, will you go speak on this? So here I am. What we have is the same situation that he's talking about at 300 South Redwood, where Cambie Business Center is. It's not that I really mind people parking there occasionally, but it's a habit that if we allow it to form, it will affect my tenants, and it has affected my tenants, our tenants, at Cambie Business Center. And so if he's having a situation and I'm having a situation, and we have the ability to address this issue, I think I should be here and say, this is what I'm feeling as a representative of Anderson Properties. So that's my piece. I've noticed it. I've been with Anderson for 10 years. And it's not, it's not like it hasn't been noticed by me. It's a real thing. There you go. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. I appreciate it. Like I said, we'll approach the subject here with the city manager and see what next steps we might take. Great. I don't have any other citizen input. I will make a couple of community announcements. I'm still waiting until later. I do want to let the Cambie public know that former mayor William Palmer has passed away. He served a number of years ago, but did pass away a couple of weeks ago. So please keep their family and your thoughts and prayers on that. Kiwanis Toy and, mostly toy and food drive is going on. They've had a great response regarding toys and their toy buckets around barrels, I should say, around town. Their big need right now is for cash for food gift cards. So they like to do gift cards to families as well to be able to do shopping for their, their Christmas season. Here in town, they do them to Safeway Fred Meyer and to Thriftway. But funds are tight, and so they're looking for more cash donations than toy donations for the food gift cards and then also for things for the older teens. A lot of the older teens, 14 through 17, don't usually have a lot of things that get dropped off for them. So Kiwanis usually chips in and tries to make up for that. So if you can make a donation here, they would really appreciate that. And then last but not least, this Friday is Light Up the Night. The parade starts at 6:00. The weather says that it will not be raining. It'll be chilly, but no rain. So that means in years past, that means that we generally see thousands of people in our downtown and around Wade Park. So come early, grab a spot and hang out. There's a parade. Santa will be there. Are you...
We're delivering.
You're delivering Santa? Fantastic. And then carolers and there's food and all sorts of stuff. So come down and hang out and light up the park with us. Yes, Chief.
Mayor, if I may. I would like to announce that the fire district will be holding an open house from noon until 3:00 on December 14th at the main fire station. And this will be the transition of command for honoring the new fire chief, Matt Dale, who will be sworn in at 1:00 is when the ceremony will start. And we're fortunate to tonight to have the new fire chief, Chief Dale, here tonight. So Matt, if you wouldn't mind coming up so we could introduce you and if you want to say a few words.
I'm guessing you didn't know that he would do that to you?
I had no idea.
If he didn't, I was going to. So...
He told me that would be happening, too. Good, good evening, council. Thanks for recognizing me. I am, it's an honor to take over the fire district from Chief Jim Davis. And I look forward to meeting with each one of you in the near future and continuing to work collaboratively right alongside the city of Cambie as, as we have done for at least the past 10 years, if not longer.
Well, congratulations, Matt. You're going to do a great job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. I think you took a little too much pleasure in putting him on the spot.
I did.
That's all I think that we have in terms of citizen input and community announcements. I will move into item four, which is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the October 9, 2024 city council work session minutes, the November 20, 2024 city council work session and regular meeting minutes, and the appointment of member Carol Palmer to the Heritage and Landmark Commission for a term that will expire June 30, 2027.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and second by Council Davis to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the October 9, 2024 city council work session, the minutes of the November 20, 2024 city council work session and regular meeting minutes, and the appointment of Carol Palmer to the Heritage and Landmark Commission for a term that will expire on June 30, 2027. Any questions or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries 5-0. Next item, number five tonight, is ordinances and resolutions. We have one this evening, and that's ordinance 1637. And it's an ordinance authorizing the transfer of $512,000 to the Cambie Adult Center. And Eileen, I'll let you fill in the details.
Be happy to. So Mayor and council, you received a draft ordinance of 1637 back on Monday that was prepared by Emily. I, it, it's transferring the $512,000 to the Cambie Adult Center. There have been a couple of updates on the funding agreement that I wanted Emily to walk through with you. So short of that, the ordinance is done. It's in final form. It's ready for adoption. But I wanted Emily to, to comment on a couple of aspects of the funding agreement between the city of Cambie and the Cambie Adult Center, and then to update you as well on the memorandum of agreement that would, that would be between the city and Clackamas County. So Emily, if you would, take it from here.
Absolutely. Happy to. I just want to check first to make sure I'm coming through loud and clear. Are we good on volume and everything?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So to recap from last, at our last council discussion on this, we brought to council a draft that included some optional language to discuss and to receive guidance on. Most of that language pertains to the conditions under which the city would grant these $512,000 to the CAC restrictions on the usage and that sort of thing. So the first thing that these two versions, so the version that you see shared on your screen and the version that is in your packet, they are both the same in that their language reflects council's guidance from our last discussion on this. And so if you look to section 2A on either, either version, because it will be the same for both, you'll see that the purpose for the funds is that the CAC can use them for any expense associated with moving from their current building into the old building. So that reflects council's direction that, you know, shouldn't be too prescriptive. We shouldn't be too prescriptive on the restrictions that we, we place on the grants these funds. The next change you'll see is in section four. So under section four, these are the conditions under which the CAC would be required to return the funds. As discussed, that would be any, in the event that CAC uses them for purpose not committed under the agreement, funds must be returned. And in the event that the CAC ceases to own, occupy, or use their new property for its mission sooner than eight years following the date that they purchased the property, which we talked about 85 years, 10 years, we landed on eight years as appropriate. So those are the changes that may need to reflect our discussion from last time. I'll pause there for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Emily. And I appreciate that. Daniel, or sorry, Council Sterns.
Oh, the question I have is, and like I say, I don't anticipate it being a problem, but I don't, but I'm, I don't see anything that gives a sort of a timeframe for the adult center to move out of the current building. And the reason why I kind of want to, I don't know, I'm concerned about that is if they stay in the current building too long, then those funds that would be needed to keep that building, you know, so they could use it. And so if they end up staying too long at the current location, then all of a sudden, we would, I anticipate we would need that money for the current building. And so I was wondering if there's anything that says something to the effect that the move has to be within some reasonable time, but not forever. And maybe that being part of the clause would actually speed up the process rather than saying we have forever to move. I don't know if that makes any sense.
I think it does. So your concern is that if, if the CAC did not have a timeline for completing the move to the the move to the new property, that they would remain in the current property, which has some needs that would take a lot of money in order to meet. And is the concern then that they would use these $512,000 on the current property rather than moving to the new property?
Well, I was thinking if they stay too long, it might become necessary to allocate the funds that we would have used for the move to keeping the current property in a fit condition for them to stay.
Okay, I understand. So I would say that the language, in the Purpose Section under Section 2, it says that the funds may only be used for expenses associated with, associated with or generated by the transition from one building to the other. So under that language, using the funds to maintain their current building would not be permitted use.
And so that's kind of my concern is. So I was wondering if there's something that could be added in there that says they have two years to move out or something, or three years or something like, to that effect, so that we don't, we're not stuck in the position of saying, we gave you the $500,000 for the new building, but wait, now we need it for the current building because you didn't move.
Yeah, so I can, we can
I mean, in time, you know.
Would have to run that by the CAC and see what is reasonable for their timeframe. Either that they want to move quickly on this. So it could be that whatever timeframe we put on is more of a safeguard than anything that would incite them to move faster. But that's a term we'd have to check with them. But I can certainly work on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't anticipate anticipating being a problem, but it's always good to have the guardrails there. That way, if any temptation in the future comes, they might say, well, we actually got to move this along or else. So I don't anticipate it being a problem, but I still like to have the idea that if it's in the contract, it may prevent it from being a problem.
Understood.
Before I go to Council Paton?
Yeah, just that, well, now he brings up another question. Do we have any indication that the Adult Center is going to drag their feet? It seems like they're in a hurry to move anyway.
I don't think it'll be a problem.
No.
But I just, it's a preventative action to make sure there's not a problem.
Sure. Okay. And my only question, though, is, has Kathy and the board seen this? And are they agreeable to these changes in the terms?
These particular changes, they are, yes. There's another change that I will address later on that they requested, and I'll touch on that there. But these particular ones, they have seen and do not have an issue with.
Okay.
Council Paton?
Yeah, I would say I understand where Councilor Sterns is coming from as far as if they stay in the current building for more than two years, there may need to be updates made to it that would need to come from some other pot money because we gave them this pot money.
Okay.
I would say it might be wise to really get, by formalizing this agreement and giving them clarity that they will have this amount of money to move forward with the purchase of the building or whatever they're going to do to it, that might give them some more clarity on what their move-in timeframe will be. And then we can maybe create some other document that says, you know, the city will be responsible for any maintenance to that building for, you know, things up to two years. But after that, we, it will need to reconsider it. Not this pot of money, but what those changes, what those changes is the current building will be, with an understanding that we're giving you this money in an effort to get you into your new place so that we don't have to put any more money into the old place, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. Yes, that's a good thing for us to keep in the back of our minds. I don't see a place for that language in this current agreement. And I think when we have the council, I will circle back to the CAC to get a sense of their anticipated timeline. Once we have a better sense of that, we can evaluate whether this is something we need to keep in our back pocket, or they're moving so quickly that, you know, the circumstance that you're envisioning won't pack up. Does that kind of sound right to you?
Yes.
Okay.
So Emily, so under Section, so Section 2A, that language that's there does not satisfy the concerns that are being expressed?
I, so it satisfies the concerns about using these $512,000 for only the transition and not to improve the property. But if I'm understanding the councilor's concerns right, it's that the longer that they stay on the current property, the more chance there is that the city will need to spend other money to maintain that current property. So not that the money under this agreement will go towards the current property, but that circumstances will arise that will require the city to spend other money to maintain or fix or do whatever other issues pop up while the CAC is working on their transition to the new one.
Okay, so just to make sure that, hearing right from the council, that we want something in here provision-wise that says move out, it has to be within two years, anything beyond that, any?
Two years or some other reasonable timeframe. I'm not married
But that, we're not
To the two-year thing, yeah.
Are we wanting to help with the bill for improvements, or is this falling back to the Cambie Adult Center? Like, what is it that we want as a potential course of action if that doesn't happen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would recommend that we let Emily go back and talk with the CAC and just cover with them our concerns, and that if we need something, that that be in a separate agreement other than this one to deal with that.
So kind of an addendum later on.
Yeah.
Okay. Council Paton?
Yeah, that is kind of what I was, what I was insinuating is that I think we should be moving forward with this agreement so that that way they have, you know, clear-cut understanding of what they can do for that plan. And then we can look at, you know, age of building, what are some of the concerns, you know, come like, is it two years, is it three years? And then come to some understanding, say, look, the city will make sure that that building is in adequate condition for the next two, three years while you do this transition. But after that, you know, if like, an HVAC system falls through the ceiling, we're going to put a tarball rig, we're going to call it a day, you know, in year four, sort of thing, you know? So that way, we aren't having to sink more money into that building.
Right.
But that would be, that would be a separate agreement and set understanding with the Cambie Adult Center group outside of this document. I worry, I worry about putting too many restrictions into this document and tying their hands too much. I think we need to show some sort of trust between the two groups that we want to move forward with this, but still have an understanding of what the timeframes are going to be.
Okay. Council Sterns?
I was sort of under the impression that the building currently, like as of today, is not adequate, which is what the original reason for putting the 500. So as of today, unless I'm wrong, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as of today, the building is not up to snuff. And originally, we wanted the $500,000 to get it up to snuff. And so the longer they stay in there, so right now, every day that they stay in there, they're in a subpar building. And obviously, by saying, we're not spending the $500,000 on fixing the building up, we are sort of condemning them to a subpar building. But the longer it stays that way, the less serviceable it will be. I'm not really, I don't think it'll be a problem from what they're saying. They want to get going really quickly and everything. But I am in favor of putting, I don't think that adding that clause would take a lot of time. And if it's not going to take a lot of time, I'm in favor of doing it before it happens, because it seems like after, addendums afterwards sometimes can take a long time. And when there's a sense of hurry, that's usually the best time to get the agreement in place. When there's sense of no hurry, that means it might never happen.
So you're wanting to maybe table this?
If, as long as it's not a huge thing.
Okay. Council Davis?
So, sorry, I have another question, so I won't go yet.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Emily.
Okay. Yes, to the Councilor Sterns' comment, I agree that this agreement would not be the place to sort of lay out what the city's obligations would be to maintain or repair the existing, the current building in the interim. Before we add language requiring some sort of move timeline, I do want to talk to the CAC, see what's reasonable on their end, and if it also works out to be reasonable in a way that mitigates the risk of maintenance costs popping on in the interim for the city. So that's what I would propose to do there. And I think that kind of accounts for both councilor's concerns here. But correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, I think so. Council Davis?
I'm in favor of moving this ordinance forward. The longer we drag it on, the more it's going to, the more time. They're looking, the way this, and Emily did a great job with this agreement. But the longer we drag our feet, it's going to slow them down considerably on the close of the property. And so that's why I would like to, and I really don't see the need for tabling this any further, just simply because, Emily, is it possible to get this addendum? Because this has to come back for a second reading on December 18. Can we have that addendum and/or a separate understanding with them, what Councilor Patton was talking about?
We can. So we, so the way that the ordinance is drafted, if you look at the ordinance language, is that council offers this, the city administrator, to forward the fund transfer pursuant to an agreement that is substantially similar to the agreement that we attached to the ordinance today. So that substantially similar language gives Eileen and I some wiggle room to coordinate with the other two entities involved with this transaction. If there's small language changes that need to happen in the interim, we can, we have the room to do that. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah. There's a bit of flexibility in the process.
Yep.
Okay. Hearing no other questions on this particular part, let's talk about sort of the second, second topic for this. So since we last looked at this agreement, Eileen and I have been talking to representatives from both Clackamas County and the CAC about what they need to see on their end. So on the Clackamas County side, the concern that I'm trying to protect the city from is the city transferring this money to the CAC and then also getting hit with the requirement to reimburse the county for the CDBG funds that were used to purchase and improve the CAC's existing building. And so last time, I adopted what I'm calling a memorandum of agreements, the idea of which would be to have the county and Cambie sign this memorandum, saying very clearly that the two IHKs that, through which the CDBG funds were transferred to the city for this building are terminated, there are no obligations on the part of Cambie any longer, and that sort of thing. So we sent that to Clackamas County, and the feedback from Clackamas County is that in order for them to consider and then decide upon this very kind of formalized agreement between the city and Clackamas County would take a lot of time. So it would have to go through their county council's review and then up to their board of commissioners. Eileen, you, in your experience, it sounded like perhaps even months for that process with no guarantee that the county would agree to that language on the other side. What the county representative said he can do for us is send us a letter in writing confirming that the transfer of these funds, the $512,000, to the CAC satisfies the city's obligations towards those CDBG funds, and that the county would not require reimbursement of those funds. So it is not as formalized as the NOA, the Memorandum of Understanding, would be. But discussing with Eileen and discussing with others at my firm, this is a situation where all three entities involved, Cambie, Clackamas County, the CAC, are all on the same board. This is something that they want to happen. This is something where it sounds like you want to get the money to the CAC as quickly as possible. So I'm comfortable telling you that I don't think it is unduly risky for us to proceed with just the letter from the county rather than the NOA. However, this is a policy choice for council to make. I'll pause there for questions.
Okay. Council Paton?
Yeah, so let me just make sure I understand this correctly. You're saying that this individual, this representative from the county cannot say that this would satisfy an obligation to get the city out from underneath the bid, unless it goes through, like, the county commissioners and all that stuff. But safe to say that if we gave them the money, we had this letter that it might not be us that would have to pay that money back, it would be the Cambie Adult Center. Is that correct?
No, not correct. So the county representative does not have the authority to sign a very formalized agreement on writing, which is what I had drafted. In order for us to get the county to sign that, it would have to go through the levels of review all the way up to the board of commissioners, which is a long process. What the, this representative says is that he can issue us a letter saying that he, that the county, by giving the transfer, that the city will have satisfied all of the CDBG obligations, and then the, and the CAC would have none.
And I want to
I'm sorry, Eileen, go ahead.
I just want to interject that this is the county CDBG administrator that's writing this letter. It's not just, you know, a county staff person, but it is the CDBG administrator.
Okay.
Who I believe came and spoke at a work session previously, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Council Paton, is that answer your question?
Naturally, no, because it's not what you're saying both are true. It's saying this letter will get us out from underneath that obligation, but it holds. So is that his?
So it's, you've identified the issue here. So it's more of a form over function issue, is that by presenting like a very rigid, I would call it a very rigid, very stringent memorandum of understanding or agreement to the county, Mark has said that he can't sign that. He's not authorized to enter into that agreement. But I'm kind of filling in the gaps here a bit. As part of this position, he can issue us a letter administratively saying that this transfer of the funds to the CAC satisfies the city's obligations. So it more or less accomplishes the same thing. It is just not as rigorous. Does that make sense?
Not as official.
It's starting to become clear. So would it make sense to still move along with a more clarified thing, even if it takes several months? Or should we just take the letter and run, and then if something comes up, play stupid?
Yes.
So I sat down with another person at my firm to talk through the risks here. And what we're looking at is the risk of the county suddenly coming back and saying, actually, you do have to reimburse these funds sometime in the future, even though we were told that sending the funds on to the CAC would satisfy any reimbursement obligations. We don't think that risk is very high. We have lots of email exchanges indicating the county's intent to not seek reimbursement, and the county's perception that this fund transfer satisfies the city's obligations. Now, I know you're going to pause there and say emails, and I agree, email's not good enough. But those emails would be there to support the letter in which the Mark, as soon as Mark, would release the city from its obligations. So on, and the benefit of going the letter route rather than sending the NOA through a full review process is that it allows us to make the transfer quickly. From this past discussion and tonight, you know, I understand that the CAC is trying to quickly, the building that they're currently in is not in good repair. It's not helpful to them. And I think I remember that their goal was to close on the transaction before the end of this year. I don't know if that's still realistic for them or not, but not going through the formal NOA process would help timelines.
Okay. Jay, Council Paton, is that?
I mean, it's going to be what it's going to be.
Okay.
I still, I still would like to, I think we're being stuck between a rock and a hard place on this one.
Okay. Council Davis?
A question for Eileen. Did you go to a work session today? Was there a work session at the county on this, or did you have a discussion with the county on this?
The, there was not, not a work session today that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But I have been involved in the conversations that have occurred.
Okay. And so what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we go with the letter and, and move on and expedite this and get the money to the, to the Canby Adult Center as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
So approve the ordinance, get the letter from, as a cushion or not official but unofficial? Okay. Yes, Counselor Sterns?
I'm going to be just the annoying one tonight, I'm sure, but it's been mentioned that there's a big hurry. And I would just like to have someone sort of why the hurry. It's, in my experience, whenever he says, "I'm in a hurry, it has to be done right now," that's usually the time I recommend to my clients or whoever that, let's, for that reason only, let's pause for a little bit to look at it. But I'm just curious, you mentioned the hurry, somebody else mentioned the hurry. My understanding is a deal between two nonprofits and I don't know that there's an arbitrary deadline. My understanding is the funds belong to the city right now, so the dispersment of the funds is not contingent on, on, on any time scale. So if maybe, explain for everybody what the hurry is.
I think one of the reasons that they're in a hurry is that they're hoping to be able to apply this money to their closing costs.
At the end of the month.
At the end of the month.
Because, so the hurry is to make the deal close. The deal date itself is an arbitrary date.
To get them the money is what they need.
Right.
Yeah. I'm just saying is, because we have some concerns out there that, I don't know, if there's a hurry in an emergency, then I guess, if you can explain the emergency, then I'd be more supportive of doing it hur- hurry. But if everybody says, "We want to get it done by December 31st because we like that date and not January 5th," I don't see what's different between, you know, you know, you know what I'm saying? Between December 31st and January 15th, is there a, because, because if we take an extra week or two to, to look it over, get everything, is that going to cause irreparable damage to the parties or are we just getting in a hurry so it can get, be there and get done with? So I don't know.
Well, this still has to come back to us on December 18th. So there's plenty of time to deal with the concerns.
Counselor Sassy?
So we, we're not in a hurry. We've been working on this, the offer was made over a year ago, correct?
About six weeks.
And when that gentleman, the expert, came to us and said, "We had a clear path." I'm kind of like Counselor Patton, I'm stymied, why all these roadblocks all of a sudden? We had a clear path. Our record, I mean, Jason, what do you think about? We were told, he said, "There's no problem with the block grants." And here we are now, working on guidelines and roadblocks and this money, doesn't it have to be done before the end of the year?
Again, that's the Canby Adult Center's hope, that they can close on this deal by the end of the year. They're looking for the city's contribution.
I mean, I'm baffled. I, I thought we had a clear path and this thing was done and on the path to get-
That's why it is my recommendation that we move forward with the letter as opposed to the longer process of getting the agreement from the county board of commissioners.
Counselor Patton, another question?
Yeah, well, I guess what I'll say is, you know, I'm not going to stand in a position of this, I'm going to approve it tonight because I want to get this moving forward. But I think for me, one of the things that it's been, that's been interesting about this process is, you know, at first it was carbon funds to use to update the building they're in, then it's, no, we're going to purchase the, you know, Methodist Church and then we're going to use these funds to update that structure because we need to put in a water cooler and we need to make updates and stuff, fine. Then all of a sudden it's like, no, actually, we're going to, and, and, and those conversations with the county official, that's what we've been talking about. $500,000 would go towards upgrades to the, to, to the church for them, once they, once they purchase the building and move into it. Now all of a sudden it's like, no, actually, we're going to use $500,000 to purchase the building and then we're going to come up with funds to do the fix later. Like I said, I'm not going to stand in the way of this. I want to see it move forward. I want to see these people get into that building and get what they need done done. But it just, this is all, it's just not very tidy. It, it just seems like one of many things that we've done here at the city where we start, we start with one expectation and then it changes and then it changes and it changes again. And then after everything goes forward, it could change again and it's something different. It just, it just doesn't sit well.
So I mean, I, I hear that, Jason, and I think in this situation, it's one of those, I mean, we not, we didn't put strings on the money. There's nothing attached to it that says you have to use it for this. And I think they're using that, the funds, to do what they think is best for the CAC, the Canby Adult Center, to be able to do what they need to do. So, I mean, I, again, like, it goes back, I think Counselor Sterns had brought up too, back was, we're not putting, should we put strings on it that can, it can only be used for this? I mean, whether you're pulling it from pot A to put into pot B, it's still $500,000 no matter where you put it.
Are you ready for a motion?
I don't know. Emily, is there anything else regarding this?
Yes. So on the question of NOA versus letter, we need direction from council because there are two versions of the agreement. So one in your packet contemplates the NOA and the one that I would ask, may I throw back up on the screen, is in the case of a letter. So do we have guidance on which route council would like to pursue?
Do you, oh, I was going to say, do you have a recommendation, Emily?
I recommend leaving with the letter.
Okay. Okay. So do you need, Emily, do you need a motion for the letter? Is that what you're asking for or just direction?
Um, so, well, here, let me explain how it'll attach the ordinance and you can tell me what the best way is to accomplish that. So the ordinance itself references the agreement attached as exhibit A or attachment A, whichever language it uses. So whichever version of the agreement you'd like us to go with will be then attached as that exhibit and then you will, you will move on the ordinance. Does that make sense?
I think so. Counselor Sterns and then I'll go to Counselor Patton.
If we get the letter, can we still pursue the formal one in the time that it takes to get the formal memorandum of understanding?
Sure, you say we could, but it could be denied. And then we kind of-
Well, if it's so, but if we, this is approved and the memorandum's denied, then basically we just say oops. Because if they deny the memorandum, that basically means they intend to go back on, I mean, that's the way I would interpret it. A question for, you know, Emily, what are, what's, what's kind of like the statute of limitations on these kind of things? How, how, how long does this hang over our heads?
So the, the length of time that it hangs over the heads, your heads, is set by the two intergovernmental agreements, the two IGAs that the county and the city were partying to. And then the funds were dispensed over, under those two IGAs. So one IGA expires when the building, the building's useful life as, as an adult center or for a place in which the CAC can provide senior services is done. So I do have it in writing that the county agrees that the building's life, useful life has expired. So, you know, that's really good for us. We can extrapolate under, under that condition that the IGA is also expired.
Counselor Patton?
So is option A the verbiage that has the letter or option B that is the ordinance that has, that is the contract that has the verbiage with the letter?
So the ordinance remains the same. It's just which, which will be attached. So option A is in your pocket and that is the version that is the agreement plus the NOA and option B is just the agreement and we'll get the letter from the county separately.
Okay. So if that's the case, I move to approve ordinance number 1637 and ordinance approving the award of $512,000 to the Canby Adult Center using option B to a second reading on December 18th, 2024.
Second.
Just one.
Yeah, one quick question.
Hold on.
All right, well, you can go first because you haven't talked as much on this. I'll let you.
Okay, so the motion is on the table from Counselor Patton and second by Counselor Davis to approve ordinance 1637, three, seven, and ordinance approving the award of $512,000 to the Canby Adult Center with the addition of option B of the letter to come for a second reading on December 18th, 2024. Did I capture that correctly? Maya and Emily? Okay?
That's what the verbiage of the motion, yes, you did.
Discussion.
All right, just a quick question. The fact that there is no emergency clause, does that hold up the funds for what they need it for by the end of the year?
No. So in your charter, you have, in generally, in your charter, ordinances go into effect 30 days after the second reading. But you have nice language that says that whenever council deems it advisable or in the case of emergency to make the ordinance go into effect on a day other than 30 days after the second reading, then you can do so. So the ordinance language, you'll see, says that council is found it advisable for it to go into effect immediately upon the second reading, I believe. That might not be exactly right, but I have taken it out of the 30-day general rule. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. It's just generally in the motion, so I was a little confused by that because that's not-
Oh, I apologize.
No problem. That satisfies my question. Thank you.
Counselor Sterns?
The current contract is still not finalized at this point. When the second reading happens, will it be finalized at that point or will it still be up in the air? And if it is still up, if it's still not complete, are we going to be just basically saying, "I agree to whatever it ends up being?" Or will something that on the second reading that we're, that we're going to be, that's going to be the actual contract?
Good question. So the goal is to have the CAC's approval of the agreement at least and hopefully also their signature on the signature line by the second reading, so we can just sign it at that time and move forward. But remember, the ordinance isn't actually entering into the agreement in itself, it's authorizing Eileen to do so. So we don't need to have an agreement executed and in fact, we can't fully execute it until the second reading. And if it's such that the CAC doesn't get back to us or whatever until a week or so after the second reading, then Eileen will be authorized to sign on the dotted line at that time.
But if there's, if there are changes to the contract between what we approve and what's actually executed, I'm just trying to wrap my head around making approval for something that's not, that's not really finalized. I mean, I can see, you know, correcting Scrivenor's errors are on it, but I mean, but I, I think we were talking about maybe dates and other kinds of things that could be put in there.
So the form of the ordinance won't change. It is the funding agreement and the ordinance gives me the authorization to enter into the funding agreement.
Okay. But in the end, the final draft will be approved by you, Eileen.
Right.
And so we're just saying that we want it to happen, but however it happens, and hopefully it happens kind of what we agreed to tonight, but we're agreeing to put our faith, I mean-
Well, there is a thing on that because there are guardrails on what Eileen can sign. So under the ordinance's language, it says that Eileen is authorized to sign an agreement. That is the same as or substantially similar to the agreement that we're moving forward with tonight. So it's not that we can suddenly go and change the dollar amounts or any really substantive provisions of the agreement. Those will have to stay the same, otherwise we will not have the authorization under the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on the matter?
No.
Jim says no.
Let's move it along.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm going to say nay at this, just because I don't think it's-
You don't think it's fully baked yet?
I don't think it's fully baked, but I'm just one vote, so it's still-
Well, that's all right. Motion passes for one. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Emily.
Mayor, I just did want to thank Emily and the city administrator for a job well done on this.
For sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item six is old business, which I don't think we have any old business at this point. Item seven, new business. Item A, which is considering authorizing the city administrator to enter into an adoption of First Amendment to extend employment contract between the City of Canby and Chief George Trow through December 31st, 2026.
So council, the police chief would like to work for two more years.
I think I just heard an echo in the chamber that said, "We'll see."
He'd like to work at least beyond the, the expiration of his current contract. How's that? Is that better? Somewhere between the end of this year and two years from now, he would like to keep working. So this, all this agreement does is extend the contract by two years.
Yes.
Are you ready for a motion?
I do have a quick question, though.
Yes.
Love you. Two years, you're locked in. Shouldn't this be an ordinance?
Got your microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Jason. Shouldn't this be an ordinance? Or tell me the difference, but why this isn't an or, because when Kitzmiller came-
Yeah.
We did an ordinance for his. I just have a question.
That's a good question.
The expenditure-
It's an amendment to a contract. So Kitzmiller's agreement was the first time-
First time.
That the council had considered that. This is an extension.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Davis?
I moved to authorize the city administrator to enter into an adoption of First Amendment to extend the employment contract between the City of Canby and Chief George Trow through December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Davis and second by Counselor President Hindley to consider authorizing the city administrator to enter into an adoption of First Amendment to extend employment contract between the City of Canby and Chief George Trow through December 31st, 2026. Any discussion or comment? I do have a comment. I'm glad you're staying on two more years, chief-ish. Counselor Sassy says you're locked in. I might, I might agree with him on that.
Well, it says-
I know that it's not counsel's purview to discuss performance of a director or city staff member.
That is correct.
Okay. So we can't get into his job performance and whether or not this is a valued-
Well, we can talk about the beaver. We can talk about the beavers and the-
You can certainly make him-
No. I, I, I kid and I'm being tongue in cheek, but no, Chief Trow, you've done a great job and really appreciate you sticking around for another two years, so thank you for that. So, no, I don't want to see your employment file. I'm sure it's stellar, so. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. That carries five to zero. Yes, please, Chief Trow.
Wait a minute. You're waiting. You're not revoting?
Yeah, she's easily-
It really is. It's, it's a thank you. I don't take this position lightly. I'm truly honored to serve this community as the police chief and so thank you for extending the contract. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Next on the agenda, mayor's business, couple of things. Love, I've had a series of fun emails regarding leaf debris and pickup in our city streets. And so I know that there aren't many leaves left on the trees. Having done some driving around town and talking to a few citizens of Canby and few landscapers that I know, that the leaf, leaf debris in the streets is an exorbitant amount this year. And that creates a tremendous additional workload and expense on our streets team and on the city. So I please ask that you scoop up and use your yard debris bins for, for those leaves and, you know, the street sweepers can get remnants, but they cannot get the piles that are being left in our streets. So please, I know we're almost out of leaf- So please, I know we're almost out of leaf season, but those of you that still have not, please pick those up. I have brought this up before, and I really don't want to ask the council to look into other methods of, of making sure that there's, this is taken care of. And the city manager and I have had some conversation in the last couple of weeks about the leaf piece and debris and what might be some actions that could be taken by, by council on that. So please take care of that and not blow your leaves into the street. Goal setting coming up for the council here at the end of January and beginning of February. I know that the facilitator has set out a time or requesting maybe a time to connect and interview with her before then. So please reach out to her and council, if you would, to set time up with her. There's a format question that's come up, and that is about having the department heads involved in the goal setting session like we did last year. I know we had dialogue about content and not maybe doing quite the, the extensive personality examination that we did last year, which that message has been delivered and is heard. But I guess the question that we're, Eileen and staff are looking for is having department heads involved. Is there value in that? Do we want to have them involved? Not have them involved? So, yes, Counsel Davis?
Thank you. Yes, last year, I felt that we spent way too much time talking about traits, our traits, their traits. A lot of discussion, and we never really get to spend a lot of time on council goals. I certainly don't mind the department heads listening and listening at the work session, but I would hope that this is focused around council goals with the city administrator.
I would agree. This is a council discussion for council goals. And then the next day or the next week, they had a, they had their own retreat, if you will. So I don't know that it's a useful, I don't know if it's a beneficial use of staff time to, to attend both. But, I mean, we are paying their salaries for two different times to listen to us yammer about our goals. So I'm thinking it might be more financially effective just to have our discussion like we've done in the past, set our goals, and then Eileen takes it to the department heads, to their meeting later.
Does having the department heads report out things that they're working on help us determine our goals?
No, I personally would rely on the city administrator to report out on the projects that, on last year's goals and proposed goals, working with us on the proposed goals for the prior year. And then it's up to the city administrator to work with the department heads to achieve those.
I agree.
Counsel Sterns?
I personally like the idea of having the department heads at least to give feedback on, you know, whether, how feasible, how feasible the goal could be, because I think with, working in the, in the vacuum, it's easy to create a goal that's not feasible. However, I want to reiterate that if it's, if it keeps us from doing our goals to have too many people present, I don't want, I don't want them there. I would like, it may be nice to say there's a resource, but I really, like last, last time, I felt there was not enough time for the goals. If we have lots of time for the goals and department heads want to be there to give input, I think that's fine. But again, I want it to be about the goals, not about, I mean, it's not, it was not, I'm not complaining about the whole personality issue. It's just, I think we didn't have time at the end to, to do the goals, the goals.
Okay. Counsel Pat, any thoughts?
I'm, I'm fine either way. I agree. I don't think the personality thing is necessary. Just focusing on, you know, our goals and stuff, and sticking away from pitfalls, the other pitfalls that could take us off track, and we lay the process. So, you know, if, if the department heads are there, because we're working on a goal, and, you know, it's, and the question needs to be asked to them, is this realistic or not? Because Eileen might not know right off the top of her head. I don't see a problem with that, but, you know, it's, it's entirely up to, it's up to Eileen.
Okay. Does that help?
Thank you.
Okay. The other piece, a couple of other pieces. So there was a question about applications for committees and whatnot. And so we think, I guess there was some confusion or on my end regarding Carol Palmer's recent application for the Heritage and Landmark Board. And so one of the things that we were looking at in that, so new applicants for any boards and committees, we will include in packets for going forward. If it's a reappointment, they will not be in, in the, in the council packet, because really, for a reappointment, I don't see a need unless you all don't think that's, you want to see them, okay? And then in conversation with Maya the other day, we will make sure that, that that also gets included in the policies and procedures piece for the council going forward. So that gets kind of memorialized in that regards. I already announced, but I'm going to announce it again in case you missed it the first time. Friday, we are lighting up the park. The parks team has been diligently working on the park. They've been out there with the cherry pickers and getting lights up and the tree up and whatnot. And it's already, it's going to look really fantastic. So please come down, hang out, sing Christmas carols. It'll be a great evening. Speaking of council policies and procedures, that will be coming before us on the second meeting in January for us to approve. Eileen and I are possibly talking about a work session pertaining to this beforehand, so that, because I do know how much you all love to talk and work things through before it actually comes to a vote. So that will be coming up. There may, like I said, there may be a, an off Wednesday work session on that. So more to come on that. But officially, for us to approve those policies and procedures will come before us on the second meeting in January. See, the Clackamas County Corning Committee does meet tomorrow night, so I will not be there. I have a conflict. My son's football banquet is that evening, so.
I will be there.
If you'll, well, you'll be at the banquet as well then. So.
No, probably not.
No? Okay. So, all right. If you're not there, I'll let you be there at C4.
Yeah.
And then.
That's your job.
On Monday, I had a, a meeting for the Region One Area Commission on Transportation, and it was a heavy review of the upcoming legislative session on funding projects for transportation and the multiple billions of dollars that ODOT is saying that they need for the projects that are hanging over from House Bill 2017, a couple of years ago. And again, it's, there's going to be a pretty robust and arduous conversation at the legislature about funding for transportation. There's a lot of it that looks like it's less new and more rehab, like rehabbing. So bridges and other highway pieces versus building new. So more to come on that as we get closer to the legislative session and once that gets started. So I think that's all that I have. Counsel comments and liaison reports is next, and we're going to start with Counsel Paton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much other than to say that when it comes to the free pickup, it, it's a very painless process, as it has been reported before. The city, for a period of time, will allow you to bring your leaves and, but not sticks and stuff, to the Public Works Department to, Mary, to drop off. And it's, as Eileen raked up half the town sign the other day, had a trailer full of leaves, I contacted the public, I searched online Public Works Department number, had my phone call it, left them a message that I was going to be, that I needed to come in on a Monday to drop off said leaves. They contacted me the next day to say you were all set, come in, and told me where to dump them, and I dumped them. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward. So if you have leaves and you need to get rid of them, can shove them in your bin, and you don't want to put them in paper bags, put them out for the Canby disposal pickup, you can, it's a pretty quick and easy process to take them to the city and drop them off for free. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Paton. Appreciate it. Counsel Sassy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing. I had no meetings. But I would like to bring up that former teacher Dave Gordon passed away also a couple of weeks ago. All my kids had him, friends had him. Wonderful man. Great loss to the community. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Sterns?
Haven't done any of my liaison meetings yet. I just wanted to just say about my earlier no vote, just to make it clear I'm not opposed to the idea, just the, I strongly believe in as many guardrails as possible. Good fences make good neighbors. Also, I just wanted to point out what was said earlier about some of the parking issues. I would just like to maybe in the near future, have some sort of work session on a unified city policy towards the issue of parking. I can empathize a little bit with my own business having trouble parking in downtown, and I'm saying that, that any specifics should be done, but I think this should be addressed, that the fact that there's multiple, there's a finite space to park, and there's, and especially as the city wants to do more infill, and as the more infill you have, the more parking space you need, you know, as long as we're a bedroom community. So I just, that's all I want to say.
Counselor, I just will remind the council that updating the city's parking master plan is a council goal for this year. And the plan is to get started on that right after the new year. So.
Counsel Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to the Public Works for the great job they're doing on all the trees, down by the railroad tracks, downtown and everything. It looks great. So hats off to Public Works for a job well done there. The Parks Committee, I reported out last council meeting in regards to the park and rec. But we did, we continue to have a number of people, and we really appreciate people coming in and giving their thoughts to the Park and Rec Committee. Auburn Farms Park, we have had representatives talking with Barry Johnson, the chair of the Park and Rec Committee, in regards to the design of Auburn, Auburn Farms. So they, Auburn Farms' park has had a lot of input. We do have HHRP who's working on the updates that have been received and a new design. Once that's been, the draft is ready, then I'm going to encourage them to bring that back to the city council to look at that, have your guys' eyes on it as well before anything's approved as far as the parks design. But I feel really good about the input that we're getting from Auburn Farms, as well as DOD's addition to the park. Maple Street Park, just so you're aware, that the lighting is, is pretty much completed, and Ryan Oliver has been working with the company in regards to the training of how to use the lighting down there with the Public Works Department, so that when baseball or softball are wanting to use it, that they know the appropriate way to use the lighting and be able to turn it on and off at the, at that. And then, of course, the Petal Park up in Sandy, that occurred on November 2nd, the grand opening for their Petal Park up in Sandy, which, of course, the council's had some discussion around Petal Park, as well as how we're going to adjust the CIP moving forward into next year's budget. And that will come back in front of the city council as well. Up at the Canby Adult Center, their big Christmas dinner is going to be December the 19th. You know, that, I know that the fire department attends once a week and serves lunch up at the adult center. And I'm really impressed with how crowded the, the lunchroom is. There's a lot of people up there now receiving lunches up there as well. So it's, it's great to see the attendance up, up at the adult center. So Kathy and staff and everybody's doing a tremendous job up there. Great. And fire department, of course, again, we certainly invite everybody to the open house and welcoming in Chief Dale. And again, that's going to be from noon until three with one o'clock with the actual ceremony, which is a traditional ceremony in the fire service on the transition of command. So I can't say enough about the, the selection of Chief Dale as the new fire chief. I think that the, I do know the fire board went through a long process, and I do know that they have selected the right person for the job.
Good deal. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Okay. Counsel President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Chief Dale. I've got some big shoes to fill, but I think you know that. I don't have any liaison report, as my meetings are later in the month, starting with tomorrow. But I did attend the chamber luncheon yesterday with the Catalinas singing. And I'm super proud of them, not just because one of them lives in my house, but I just have a bunch of talented kids, and I wanted to let everybody know that they're having their winter concert at the high school in the Fine Arts Center, December the 18th and the 19th at 6:00 PM. So encourage you all, and yeah, it's free. So you got to get there early to get a chair, but I encourage everyone to go and enjoy their lovely choirs. That's all I have.
Great. Next up, city administrator business and staff reports.
Counsel, I do have a few items. Jerry wanted me to relay to you that Walnut Street Extension Project, 10th Street Improvement Project, and the fuel facility are all either out to bid or will be put out to bid soon. So you will see a number of those projects coming back for bid award here in the next year. So.
That would have been way funnier if you'd said that Walnut Street was canceled.
It's not April.
Watch your mayor's head explode.
It's not April, or else I would have said that.
It's not April.
On December 18th, for your work session, you will have a recommendation of the Street Maintenance Task Force. So they are completing their work and are ready to present to you their recommendations. We are going to have a meeting tomorrow, a couple of meetings, a staff meeting where we're reviewing the contents of the ordinance 1262, as well as a meeting with the, a couple of representatives of the task force to make sure that we're, that, that, that what we're going to present on the 18th is, is what their expectations are. So just wanted you to know that. Canby Utility, I continue to participate in the selection of the owner's rep. We had to revisit the, the cost proposal that was received because it was significantly higher. And so the, the, the decision was made to go with the original firm, but the price was adjusted. And a notice of intent to award the bid, I think, has been issued now. So just wanted you to know that that's continuing on.
A quick question. Is that for the design?
It will, it will, it will, the owner's rep will do about a 10% design, enough to, you know, convey to the community what it will look like. But then it will move into a formal design process.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Eileen, one more.
Yes.
Piece on that.
Yeah.
Has, do we have any idea on what, what work Canby Utility has done from a, like, grant perspective or legislative or federal reach?
Good question. In fact, it might have been yesterday, Canby Utility Representatives were meeting with Business Oregon to begin that, that effort to identify what state grants are possible with, for the project. Yeah.
Counsel Pat, you have something?
Yeah, so as I understand it, this owner's rep will play a part in that aspect of it. They are, the owner's rep will, is sort of like a specialist who knows more about building a facility like this. So they know more about kind of what needs to go into it, where funding sources are, what the pitfalls can be, and rather than having somebody in Canby Utility Utility do that work, that is the, that is the purpose of the owner's rep. And so a lot of those things are going to, once that owner's rep is established, then a lot of those sort of triggers are going to start to involve.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, the better way to perhaps, because the public really doesn't know what an owner's rep is, the, probably the better term is the project manager of the, of the project. Yeah.
Okay.
And then I wanted you to know that on Monday, I'm having coffee with the school superintendent. So we'll continue to discuss areas of mutual interest, including the Ackerman site, the sports complex, the Canby Adult Center space. So we're just continuing to keep those conversations going. And then on our Canby Citizens Education Program, Kevin tells me that we have received 17 applications so far. So I'm very pleased on that as well.
For which one?
For our Citizens Engagement Academy that's starting in January. So I'm very pleased with that.
Great.
So, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next up is item 11, additional citizen input. Seeing no one rushing the stage. Ms. Benham, action review.
You have approved the consent agenda, approved ordinance eight, sorry, let me start this over again. Approved ordinance 1637, option B, which includes the letter, to a second reading on December 18th, and approved the First Amendment to extend the employment contract with Chief George Trow through December 31st, 2026.
2080.
2080. Call him Skeletor at that point. Emily, thank you for being on tonight. We really appreciate you. Also, Canby, we are having a second meeting this month. I know that that's unusual for the city council, but, because we just have the opportunity to have another meeting. So we will...
And we have business items.
And we have business items to take care of. So we will be doing a second meeting here on...
December 18th.
Thank you, the 18th. So please tune in for that as well. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We are adjourned. Canby, good night. Thank you.